We're at, we're at. Oh, we're ready ma'am, let's go.
We'd like to call this meeting of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, the council, here in the council chambers, to order. It'd like to go over the explanation of disaster procedures. We go to the basement if there is a tornado. And if there is a fire, we go out the exit doors to outside. Okay, since the meetings are being videotaped, it's important that everyone speak directly into the microphone when speaking. And so we'll start now with roll call from the alderman, Jenny?
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderwoman Duco.
Here.
Alderwoman Eris. Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele. Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wygon.
Here.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderwoman Ostoff. I have Eris, Steele, and Ostoff excused.
Okay, thank you. And now department heads Jenny?
City Treasurer Beerman.
President.
City Attorney Horner.
President.
Police Chief Matt Icecant.
Here.
Interim Fire Chief Rick Ron. Ronland, never gonna be able to do that. Finance Director Jamie Maitrait. Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith. Director of Library Leandro Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross.
President.
Director of Human Resources William Clay.
President.
Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser.
President.
And we have Deputy Chief Phelps and Jay Gott here.
Thank you so much Jenny, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And no public hearing this evening, so we will have public participation. If you are here for public participation, please raise your hand. Yes.
Only, only if someone else is gonna speak, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah. And please state your name and, uh.
Address.
Address.
Hi, my name is David Evans at one Bramble Point Court Belleville. Um, I'm just letting you know that we plan, we're proposing to open an Airbnb, um, real nice place, um, over by Memorial Hospital, um, it's got lots of parking area and it's got good distance from each of the nearby neighboring houses and, uh, just letting you know, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public participation? Okay, hearing none, we will go on with, uh, there's no presentations, recognitions, or appointments this evening. So we will now have the approval of minutes from our last meeting of August first, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we now have claims, payroll, and disbursements. A motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and two cents.
Whitaker, so move.
Ferguson.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Now, a motion to approve the treasurer's report, May twenty twenty-two, and statement of cash and investment reports from May twenty twenty-two.
Elmore.
Okay. Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Now oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. So this is a motion from administration, a motion to approve the revised twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three committee and commissions calendar. Do I have a motion?
So move, have me.
Thank you, second?
Schaefer.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, motion to approve the execution of a right-of-way encroachment agreement between the city of Belleville and G Level and Square DBA, the Harp Pub, to construct outdoor patio in the public right-of-way east of property commonly known as eleven-ten West Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Schaefer.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Okay, roll call?
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. And now we have motions from the Board of Fire and Police Commissioner. Uh, I need a motion to approve hiring Devon Sims and Jalen Rush as probationary police officers. This is a lateral move effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at twelve oh one AM.
Anthony.
Wygon.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Now we have a motion to approve hiring Brooke Pamby, Nicole Morris, Jacob Leggett, and Riley Barnes as probationary police officers effective August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at twelve oh one AM.
Schaefer, some move.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Dittelman, would you like to make the motion from ordinance and legal review?
Sure. On behalf of, uh, the ordinance and legal review committee, I'd like to make a motion on eleven C one, motion to approve an ordinance amending Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one twenty-one, alcoholic beverages, Section one two one point zero eight, specialty licenses.
Schaefer, some move.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question for Garrett. On the special licenses, if someone is bar, let's say they're participating in another event, so for example, after they want, let's say Pride Fest would want, I don't know, one of the bars downtown would stand there at their event, Pride Fest got approval to do, to close the street, does that count as the five that they have?
If they obtained a special use permit to go out into the street, it does.
Even though it's not their event?
Yes, 'cause it would be their, uh, special event license that they obtained in conjunction with a street closure. But if there was a street closure and they were just open, or they just served as they normally do, they wouldn't need to get a special event.
Right.
Special events, when you go outside your bounds.
Go outside their business, right, outside their approved basis, uh.
Yes, sir.
Or normal basis.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions or discussion? Yes, well, roll call, please.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
No.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
No.
Hazel.
No.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. And now Jenny, would you like to read the motions from the zoning board of appeals?
Separate, together, what do we want?
Any comments?
Together.
Together, okay.
Wait, can we pull eleven D four, I have some questions on that.
Yep, okay. Eleven D one, thirty-two, June twenty-two, Shoehorn Brewing Incorporated, request for assigned installation permit in the area of special control at two twenty-five East Main Street, zero eight two two zero three three four zero three six, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable sections of the zoning code, one five five point zero five two, one five five point zero five three, Ward two, granted by unanimous vote of all members present, six to zero. Eleven D two, thirty-three, June twenty-two, Shoehorn Brewing Incorporated, request for a special use permit for outdoor seating at two twenty-five East Main Street, zero eight two two zero three three four zero three six, located in the C two heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code, one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward two, in the name of the applicant only, granted by unanimous vote of all members present, six to zero. Eleven D three, thirty-six, June twenty-two, Justin Demo, request for rezoning at South Illinois Street, parcel number zero eight three four zero three zero two zero two six, from an A one single-family residential district to a C one light commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code, one six two point five nine three, Ward five, granted by unanimous vote of all members present, four to zero. Eleven D five, forty-one, July twenty-two, Emerald Coast LLC, request for a special use permit to operate an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization located three sixty South Greenmount Road, zero nine three zero zero one 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 zero zero nine, located in the C two heavy commercial district, in the name of the applicant only, applicable section of the city code, one two three point zero zero five, one two three point zero zero eight, one six two point two four eight, one six two point five one five, Ward seven, granted by unanimous vote of all members present, four to zero.
Okay, so they have been read together except for eleven D four. So I need a motion and a second for eleven D one, eleven D two, eleven D three, eleven D five.
Schaefer, some move.
And Mr. Elmore, you're a second?
Sure.
Okay, discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Just a quick question, on eleven D three, what is the physical address of that property?
Is that the one on South Illinois Street?
Yeah.
There is no physical address yet. That's, isn't that, that's the out parcel right there by, um, West Haven Drive, there is, it's just South Illinois Street right now, they don't have a numbered street, number yet.
Right, that's all.
That's exactly right.
Yes, Mr. Randall.
Thank you, mayor. Um, question on the same item, eleven D three, the other items seem to have a unanimous vote of all members present of six to nothing, but in this case it's four to nothing, what?
That was the special meeting in June and they didn't have, they didn't have enough of assets on there.
So we had multiple meetings, republish, repost, uh, to carry out the meetings, that particular one, it was a four oh count that was present.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And so the motion carries, and now let's return to eleven D four.
Eleven D four, thirty-seven, June twenty-two, David Evans, request for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at one Bramble Point Court, zero eight zero eight zero one zero three zero nine six, located in an A one single-family residential district, applicable section of the zoning code, one six two point zero nine four, one six two point five one five, Ward four, in the name of the applicant only, tie vote three to three by all members present, no recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we need discussion.
I'm just curious, I wasn't at that meeting, what, what the reason was, a three-three vote there?
Unfortunately, um, we weren't there either.
I'm sorry. So, uh, it was a three-three vote, um, as you know, we've had multiple Airbnbs come before you over the last several months. This was actually a Airbnb case, there was actually some opposition by a neighbor who had some concerns, so I don't know if that's what did it, but by my assumption would be that, that skewed the vote a little bit, gave some caution to some of the BZA members to make a recommendation of approval, but it was split down the middle, uh, based on the, uh, form that was there that night, but there was, uh, there was a concern of a neighbor about the proposed Airbnb that was expressed at the meeting, so that could potentially be why that came at a freak's rate.
One neighbor, one neighbor spoke up.
One neighbor, um, I have spoken with some people that said that they had another neighbor that had concerns, we checked our emails and we did not find anything that could be entered into the record, but, uh, there was the one that did attend the meeting and expressed their, uh, opposition to it. They had concerns, uh, with some of the fencing, for example, and how it would affect their property to the rear. I know the applicant has expressed that if there are concerns, that is an older fence and they would be willing to put a new fence in to, uh, better buffer between the two properties, um, and that could always be a condition of approval if you choose to, uh, approve the request with that amended condition to be incorporated within it. But, um, as a whole, uh, I think we know, we've been through it, we've talked about it at a couple of committee meetings, um, we've had, uh, and I've said this in meetings, this community has accepted Airbnbs better than most communities that I've seen in the past. So, uh, as a whole, you've been, everybody's been in favor, this was the one time, there was one neighbor that did come out in opposition.
Will the owner live on the premises?
The owner will not live on the premises. So this is another thing that we're talking about as part of the legal and ordinance, and I know those of you that attended the meeting last week, we're talking about, uh, committees. So Airbnbs are really not defined within our ordinance, bed and breakfast are, um, but as a precedent, the city has accepted Airbnbs very similar to the bed and breakfast regulations. The only potential issue is their most bed and breakfast are accessory uses to a property that's resided in by the primary owner because they just rent out the rooms, but our Airbnbs are not required to have the, uh, the owners present there. They are required to follow the process of, uh, what is it, one twenty-three, one twenty-one, uh, the licensing as we've talked about, uh, one fifty-four, where you have to go through your rental inspection and so forth at this point, but, uh, they are subject to hotel motel tax as well at this time. That way they're not a short-term rental that's going around the occupancy permit provisions of the Health and Housing Department.
Uh, I would like to, uh, amend my motion to, uh, comply with the, if, if the complainant has a problem with the fencing and that the owner of the Airbnb, uh, you know, wants, will upgrade the fencing.
Right.
So I'd like to, uh, amend my motion to reflect that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Suck in that, okay. Okay, Joe?
Yeah, a general question, the city staff inspected the fence, is any improvements to the fence necessary?
Well, I've looked at the fence, there, there's a little topography over there between the two properties, actually it's quite a bit, a lot of vegetation. I do not know to what extent a new fence would address the issue completely. Some of the concerns we had is you don't know who your Airbnb rental is, that, that's one of the concerns, because you don't go through the crime-free housing process, but I'm not an Airbnb expert, but I know Airbnbs have a rating system, and most people that are, um, go to an Airbnb are vetted in a sense by Airbnb or whatever it is, and, uh, they get good points system, as well as the individuals who rent out the Airbnb, they, they kind of match made perfected, you know, by our ratings, so you're gonna get a good renter, a good renter is gonna get a good Airbnb person traditionally, and vice versa. So they kind of check each other.
Right.
Anything that comes out of the special committee and then ultimately ordinance new review to this committee, are previous approvals grandfathered in, or would they be subject to any new regulations that are determined?
So anytime you have zoning, it's a land use action and it's, it's traditionally attached to the property and it's grandfathered, or it's a legal non-conforming use, grandfathered is a fancy term for that. In addition, you're adopting this via ordinance, and unless you put something in there that does that, um, it would, it would continue. Traditionally, the only thing I see that's added and changed is that it's in the name of the applicant only, that way you kind of control them. I don't think, and Garrett may disagree, but I don't think it would be a good precedent to, uh, to basically say that once we change an ordinance amendment, that, uh, that, uh, what we gave you already and that you were doing in good faith, uh, we're gonna take away from you, I think it would, could be considered as an illegal taking, in my opinion, where you've taken the highest and best use, in a sense you granted to them, and Garrett, I mean, I'm, I'm thoughtful on that.
This is, uh, zoning war actions, there's zoning issues, so it would not impact the ability to regulate the use as a lot of licensing purposes. So if the council ultimately passes, uh, uh, ordinance that regulates and requires licensing of, of short-term rentals, then they would still be subject to it even if they're already operating.
Yeah, that's a good point, 'cause that's an annual license as opposed to, yeah, that's like, eh, eh, a business license. As they change, they're only, they're only guaranteed for the year and the issuance of that license.
Mr. Hazel?
As a follow-up to my previous question about the necessity of the fence, if the city staff has inspected the fence, it's there, are we, is the motion adding an unnecessary expense to the property owner?
I don't think it gives you anymore for, for protection, I think, the, the only reason I mention is 'cause the applicant was willing to do it as part of the process, but honestly, with the concerns that I've heard, I don't think it achieves anything, uh, anything additional.
I would make a motion, unless the original motion would be amended, I would make a motion destroy.
Okay, I'll, I'll amend, I'll amend my original motion. I mean, if it's not needed, there is no, uh, you know, I've been by there, it's a lot of vegetation, um, I really couldn't tell, you know.
When honestly, the fence is not gonna address the concerns that I heard.
And if it gets that loud that it affects the neighbors, then, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, uh, I'm gonna hear the complaints and I'm gonna lodge a complaint, I guarantee you that.
Yeah, no, you're better.
So Alderman Anthony, you're gonna, you wanna amend your motion?
Yeah, I amend it, I amend it.
To not include a fence?
To not do a fence.
Alderwoman Sullivan, are you okay?
Rafi?
I just wondered, how many bedrooms would be available for the Airbnb at this location?
So I think there were three bedrooms, and bear in mind, I know we've talked about some additional, um, amendments to, to the, uh, business licensing or lodging tax, uh, uh, ordinance. This is still gonna be regulated by a health and safety, uh, component that comes through that health and housing, which comes out, quite honestly, we have a property maintenance code that says you can have a certain number of occupants per square footage of bedrooms, and I may be wrong here, but I think seventy square feet per bedroom, one hundred and twenty, you can have two in there. Point I'm making is it's going to still be regulated in accordance to the property maintenance code that sets the number of occupants to occupy the premises in a, in a safe, safe manner. Now, I, I'll be honest, it becomes, as they go in and out, you don't have a long-term tenant, that becomes much more difficult to watch, and, uh, you could potentially have that, and, you know, Scott and his folks, that, that'll be difficult to watch as well as it will be for us.
Okay, mayor, so we have a motion and a second, so there's no more discussion?
Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none?
Do roll call.
Roll call?
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
No.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
No.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Now we have a motion from Parks Board, Mr. Dittelman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for the Park Board on eleven dash E one, motion to approve an agreement with Oats Associates, an amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for engineering services for improvements at the Bellevue Park, paid for but with TIP three and M E P R D grants.
Okay.
Ferguson, second.
Okay, second? Just a second, okay, okay.
He's second, he's the motion, he's the second.
That's what I thought, it's like, okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so any discussion? Roll call?
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now a motion from Alderman Anthony from Police and Fire Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year contract extension with Tyler Technologies, protect, parentheses, mobilize software in the amount of one thousand dollars. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. And Jenny, communications.
Can I read them together?
Yes.
Twelve A, Altough Streetlight Banners, request from Altough Catholic High School to place eight new streetlight pole banners in front of fifty-four oh one West Main Street upon approval. Twelve B, Gear Jammer's Car Show, nine eleven, twenty twenty-two, request from Gear Jammer's to host annual car show at Crehans Irish Pub. Sunday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-two, nine AM to four PM, additional city services barricades. Twelve C, Schmidtling Family Reunion, nine ten, twenty twenty-two. Request from Tavern on Main to host Schmidtling Family Reunion, Saturday, September tenth, twenty twenty-two. Five PM to eleven forty, five PM, street closure, North Church from East Main to Alley and use of Hatterborn Square. Five PM to twelve AM, nine eleven, twenty twenty-two, city, additional city services, no parking signage, trash troopers, barricades, and picnic tables.
Okay. Second?
Ferguson.
Motion.
Motion?
That's the motion.
That's a motion, second?
Shaffer.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, there are no petitions this evening, and under resolutions, I need a motion to read by title only, Resolutions thirty, thirty-four fifty-four.
Shaffer, some move.
Okay, second?
Elmore.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Jenny?
Fourteen A, Resolution thirty-four fifty-four, twenty twenty-two, resolution to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court as part of the twenty twenty-two National Fitness Academy.
Okay. Motion?
Shaffer.
Second?
Ferguson.
Okay, any discussion? Yes.
Has there been any discussion on where in the city we're looking to locate this?
Jason, would you like to address?
So, this is part of the Bellevue Park and, uh, park improvements we're doing there, tagged into the, uh, park district, uh, street grant. Um, it's gonna be a fitness court, new playground, uh, small gazebo, uh, ban shelter renovations, um, a couple other, well, lake bank stabilization project there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay, do I, I have the second, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so discussion, any more? Roll call.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, these are ordinances in, uh, a motion to read by title only. Ordinances ninety seventy-eight, ninety seventy-nine, ninety eighty, ninety eighty-one, ninety eighty-two, and ninety eighty-three.
So move as a group.
Thank you. A second?
Shaffer.
Okay.
Uh, let's separate fifteen A, please.
Okay, which one?
Fifteen A?
Fifteen A?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And what about fifteen E? No?
Fifteen E.
Yeah, okay. Fifteen A, ordinance ninety seventy-eight, twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter one twenty-one, Alcoholic Beverages, Section one twenty-one point oh eight, Specialty Licenses of the revised, revised code of ordinances of the city of Belleville as amended.
Shaffer, some move.
Okay.
Whitaker, second.
Thank you. Okay. So. I was turning the page and lost track of it.
Um, any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Rothweiler.
No.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
No.
Hazel.
No.
Whitaker.
Aye.